Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Well, this is a big night for us tonight. We're going to introduce our student school board representatives, and I'm going to ask Rick Oliva, the Chair of the Board Student Advisory Council Committee, to introduce the new student representatives to the school board.
Do you like to join me up here? Board members, Superintendent Administration, and members of the viewing audience, it's my pleasure to introduce our student school board representatives. But first, a little background information. For the past three years, I've been fortunate enough to be the Chair of the Youth Advisory Council, which we have now re-envisioned and renamed the Board Student Advisory Council. During that time, I heard time and time again from the students that they wanted to be more involved at higher levels of decision-making. Oftentimes, I'd hear comments such as, you know, "We'll give our opinion, but no one really listens to us because we're kids," or there's a definite line between what the students get to decide and get to talk about at school and what the adults get to talk about at school, and the decisions that they make. My goal with this and re-envisioning it was to sort of blur that line as much as possible. And I did some research, I did a lot of searching on the Internet and through journal storage and all that, all those places, and I found that this has been a common theme with school boards and school administrations and students for well over 100 years. Students have always felt like, even from the early 1900s, that they didn't have enough of voice in school. So, three years ago, as a school board candidate, one of my top priorities was to allow students' choices in their education and meaningfully participate in curricular decisions that affect them. You can go look at the old screenshots of my website, and you can see that I'm telling the truth on that one.[252.40][252.40](Laughter). And with our new Student Advisory Council, we've created a framework in which students can have an active voice in the school district. Part of that framework is creating a direct connection between students and school board and administration. Our two high school representatives will work as liaisons between the board and their respective schools, giving them valuable leadership opportunities they would otherwise not have had, and giving the board administration a new perspective to consider it, and generating more buy-in from students. A lot of what we talk about is we need to get more community involvement, we need to get more parent engagement, more community engagement. As you can see, we have our board in the back of the room with Friends of Bloomington, local businesses that help support us, and that's all great. We need that support from all those different sources. But I've long said, and even joke sometimes, that if we have more student involvement, we don't even need a lot of us here. And any parent who's had a kid obsessed with Minecraft can really relate to that. I know my nine-year-old can name you every, I don't even know what they are. I know Pikachu, and then I don't know any of them after that. Or you get kids that can memorize every stat of every baseball player that ever lived for the last 50 years, but they can't remember to do their homework on Sunday night before school the next day. So, part of what this is, is we have the students involved in the decisions that directly affect them the most. We get them buy-in, we get them participating, we get them active, we get student involvement in the school district, and research suggests that then it will help close gaps, it will help student achievement, and it's an all-around good thing for all the students. And also, what we've done with this particular section of what we're implementing here, is we're allowing these students leadership opportunities that they otherwise would have never had. They get to sit at the board table with us, they'll be able to meaningfully participate in the meetings, and so without further ado, because I'm losing my space in my notes, in alphabetical order, I will introduce our student representatives. Ally Anderson, to my left, is a senior at Jefferson High School. She's a member of the Student Council, member of National Honors Society, a blood drive coordinator, and volunteer at Fairview-Soutdale Hospital. And Ethan Scopehammer, over here to my right, is a junior at Kennedy High School, plays hockey and lacrosse, member of the Leadership Council for Lacrosse, member of Student Government, member of IGNITE, member of Voices Heard, and his favorite color is blue.[413.12][413.12](Laughter). So, give a warm welcome to our student representatives.[417.81][417.81](Applause). And now, we will have our attorney, Mr. David Holman administer, we're at that part in the agenda, right?
Yes, we are.
Administer the oath of office to our student representatives. And this will be a time, if there's parents, friends, relatives, anybody that would like to take a picture, this would be a good time to do that.
You can come over here. This is the part where we actually test your ability to serve on the board. You're going to have to repeat an oath of office. I don't mean to put any stress on you, but no one's ever failed this test.[455.69][455.69](Laughter). So, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, "I affirm that I will support..."
I affirm that I will support.
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
The Constitution of the United States.
"...and of this state..."
And of this state.
"...and that I will discharge faithfully..."
And that I will discharge faithfully.
"...the duties of the student representative..."
The duties of the student representative.
"...to the school board..."
To the school board.
"...of Independent School District 271..."
Of Independent School District 271.
"...Bloomington Public Schools..."
Bloomington Public Schools.
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Great job. Now you have to sign your life away.[501.00][501.00](Applause).
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Congratulations.
Would the Speaker, if you'd like to, say a few words?
I'm really excited to be part of this and get a voice to the students.
I agree. I think it'll be a really cool experience, so I'm excited too.
Good. Thank you very much for joining us. We'll see how you feel after this.[550.04][550.04](Laughter). Next, we will have the Lights On After School proclamation. Would some like to make that motion?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorize the attached proclamation declaring the week of November 7th, 2016, as Lights On After School Week, the 17th Annual National Celebration of After School Programs.
Second.
Thank you. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Bloomington Board of Education stands firmly committed to quality out-of-school time programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, engaging, and fun learning experiences to help children and youth develop social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills; support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends; build stronger communities by involving our students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of our young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among children, youth, families, and adults; and engage families, schools, and diverse community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas the Youth and Family Department has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality out-of-school time programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas Lights On After School, a national celebration of out-of-school time programs, promotes the critical importance of quality before and after-school programs in the lives of children, their families, and their communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomington Board of Education declares the week of November 7th, 2016, Lights On After School Week. And be it further resolved that Bloomington Board of Education enthusiastically endorses Lights On After School and is committed to innovative out-of-school time programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all the children before and after school. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to call upon Russ Purdy to accept this.
Well, thank you, School Board members, and Superintendent Fujitaki. You know, it's estimated that more than 14 million school-aged children are on their own after school in the United States. Events like Lights On After School help send a message that we need high-quality before-and-after-school programs to help meet the needs of our students and the families in Bloomington. In 1987, Kids Safari started as an after-school opportunity at one of our elementary schools. Today, there is before-and-after-school Kids Safari programs in each of the elementary buildings, and currently enrolls over 1,200 students. In addition to Kids Safari, Community Education Services offers enrichment program classes at all the elementary schools, the Galaxy Program for the middle school students, and numerous adult classes and education classes as well. In other words, we like to keep the lights on before and after school. To celebrate national Lights On After School and draw attention to the need of quality before-and-after-school programs, Kids Safari will host a district-wide Lights On After School family event on Friday, November 11th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Washburn Elementary. We plan to have a lot of fun at this event. We're going to have a dance party, bingo, a family photo booth, food and refreshments, and visits from the police and fire departments, and we'll also be collecting donations for Veep. So, we hope to see many of you at our Lights On After School event on Friday, November 11th. So, thank you very much.[806.12][806.12](Applause).
Next, I'd like to ask Tim Ryback, Director of Operations, to step to the podium and introduce our Minnesota State Special Education Driver of the Year, Norman Raymond.[826.26][826.26](Applause).
School Board Superintendent Fujitaki, it's my pleasure to have guests with us today: Amy Tiedens from 287, Tammy Mazinga, and Norm Raymond, the, this year's winner of the Special Education State Award for Special Education Bus Driver. I'm going to hand it over to Amy and Tammy.
Good evening. Glad to be here. I'm Transportation Coordinator for Intermia District 287, but I'm actually representing MAPT tonight, Minnesota Association for Pupil Transportation. I'm a board member, and I'm the Chair for the Special Ed Committee Award. And we get nominations from all over the state every year for people to nominate drivers that drive special ed students, and Norm was one of them, and he won first place. And I'm so, so proud of him, and the kids just really enjoy him. This is Tammy Mazinga. She's work coordinator for, at West Education Center for Intermia District 287, and she's going to read his nomination.
Okay, so his nomination was that Norm is an outstanding driver. His personality is perfect for my Level 4 EBD Special Education students. At the start of the school year, during last school year, at the start of last school year, there was an altercation between two students, and Norm was able to check in with the school staff on the bus and provide all assistance needed, and/or to pull over to call police if necessary. Norm understands the population of students that he provides transportation for, and the population of the students that he provides transportation for is one of the most difficult populations of students. The students come from very rough home lives. Some are homeless, some live in group homes, some are running, living on the streets, coming from street life. So, he works very closely with all of the staff that ride along with him on the bus, and with myself for making sure that the students are safe and that all of their needs are met. And he also knows how to appropriately communicate with the students and with all of us. He knows how to appropriately joke and interact with our students, which is sometimes what they need, and he's able to do that at any given time, depending on where they're at at that moment. And when he has a sub, which is very rare, it's complete chaos. Students pick-ups and drop-off times are like 15 to 20 minutes delayed or early, and that created a lot of chaos on the bus and for our students, for the staff, and everybody. So, when Norm is there, none of that happens, and we honestly can't function without him. And all of the staff and students at West Education Center absolutely respect him and appreciate him, and we all adore him. Congratulations.[1012.62][1012.62](Applause).
I have to embarrass Norm, I'm sorry, but is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.[1025.43][1025.43](Laughter). So, he works with really tough setting for EBD kids, which have emotional behavior disorders, and a lot of them have big trust issues. And they just really, really love Norm, and his nickname is Grampy Norm.[1043.12][1043.12](Laughter). So, again, he's well-deserved.[1048.01][1048.01](Applause).
Be interested in saying a few words, you're welcome to. Next, I'd like to call upon Jennifer McIntyre, our Executive Director of Student Services, to introduce Lita O'Neil. And she is the DAPE Allen Burton Leadership Award winner.
I'm Chair Belada, Superintendent Fujitaki, and School Board members, and most importantly, our guests in the audience, thank you for coming today. We have many representatives from our DAPE team here in Bloomington, which is very exciting for me to introduce. It's the second year in a row I have had the opportunity to present the award for the Allen Burton DAPE Leadership Award. If you remember, last year, Gail Gerard had also won this award, and this is the fourth time since 2002, when the award started, that somebody from Bloomington in our DAPE team has won this award. So, we are very honored with a fantastic DAPE team, and our Special Education students and our teams within all of our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools are very fortunate to have this team working with them. For this year, for 2016, Lita O'Neil is the recipient of this award. Lita O'Neil, if you remember, she had actually retired from Bloomington last year, and so it is an honor that she has worked with us here in Bloomington since early in 1980 in many different capacities, and she became a full-time DAPE teacher with us in 1990. So, she has worked with students from age 3 all the way up to age, actually through elementary, and has worked really closely with all of our DAPE teachers in adapting multiple different activities and different sports for our students here in Bloomington. So, with that, it is my honor to be able to pass on the award of Allen Burton DAPE Leadership Award to Lita, and as you can see, we've had our four recipients here on the board.[1181.23][1181.23](Applause). Lita? And Lita, if you'd like to say a few words?
You didn't tell me that.[1195.12][1195.12](Laughter). Okay. Well, first of all, I would like to thank the School Board and Superintendent Fujitaki for acknowledging the fact, even though I have retired. But, and as you can see, it's the retired smile.[1212.83][1212.83](Laughter). But most of all, I think I would like to thank the DAPE staff that I had the opportunity to work with for so many years. They inspired me and, excuse me, they challenged me to be the best that I could be, and I love the kids I worked with. Early childhood is my favorite age group, and I'm happy to see that Ally is here because I actually remember her in early childhood.[1249.83][1249.83](Laughter). I've been around for a while. But also, the teachers and the paraprofessionals that I have worked with over the years have supported me greatly and have also inspired me to be the person that I am and to work with the population that I work with and that I hold so dearly to my heart. So, thank you, and thank you to my coworkers, all of you, retired and continuing.[1279.83][1279.83](Laughter). So, but thanks. I'm very honored.[1285.41][1285.41](Applause).
Continue to enjoy your retirement. Thanks for coming back for this. All right, that brings us to our Student School Board Representative Reports. You've barely been on the board for 15 minutes, and we're making you do a report. So, we'll start with Ally this time, and next time we'll start with Ethan.
Okay. I'm Ally Anderson, and I will be giving an update on what is happening throughout Jefferson High School. On Tuesday, October 18th, we had our first of two blood drives of the year. We had 61 total donations. It was also Anti-Bullying Day, so the topple group spread awareness and got people to wear orange. Currently, Student Council is working on keeping a positive culture throughout the school with things like Mix It Up Day, where you go meet new people and sip by others that you usually wouldn't at lunch. They are also planning events like a co-ed volleyball tournament and Jaguar Games. J-Cor is planning a dodgeball tournament, karaoke night, and a clothing drive, which are all coming up in November. The money and clothes will be donated to youth homelessness. National Honors Society puts on JHS After Hours, which is tutoring after school in the Media Center. They also have Motivational Mondays, where every Monday morning, they greet people coming into school. The marching band recently won the State Fair Spirit Award, and the indoor concerts are on November 20, or October 28th, the 29th, and the 30th. Jefferson Theater Company will be performing Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, November 17th, 18th, and 19th. This Wednesday, our school will be having a mock election. And then today, the Board Student Advisory Council met, and the topics that came up were curriculum, class sizes, personal growth plans, and the Centennial Celebration. We will be having another meeting in November and keep the board updated on what we talk about then. So, Bloomington-Jefferson participates in the Metro West Conference. The following teams won their conference title: girls soccer, boys soccer, girls cross-country, and volleyball. The football team has their first section game Tuesday versus Chaska, and the volleyball team has their first section game on Thursday. So, it's now the eighth week of the trimester, and students are continuing to work hard and stay positive as it is starting to come to an end. Ethan?
All right. This weekend at Kennedy, we are holding our first musical of the year. This weekend, October 27th through the 30th, they will be performing "You're a Good Man", Charlie Brown. They've been working hard on it since the beginning of the school year. Show Choir is also preparing for their holiday show that is performing in early December. Student Government is looking to get a bigger voice heard from all the students. They will be holding open meetings so that anyone can participate, so they get a bigger idea for what the Student Council should be working on and getting other students a bigger voice. Student Government is also working on putting together a NUCUM tournament, which is a volleyball game. Voices Heard, a multicultural conversation between the youth and the police officers, have been working hard for the last six weeks to discuss the issues that impact police and community relationships. They will be holding their final event on Wednesday, November 3rd, at Kennedy High School. NHS at Kennedy is also holding tutoring after school in the Media Center. We are having an ACT practice test on Saturday, November 12th, in the Kennedy Activity Center. The ACT prep sessions offered to the College and Career Center. Kennedy recently hosted a family engagement forum on homelessness in Minnesota. Staff elected officials and clergy attended with multiple students and families, supported services, representatives from the Twin Cities. The Bloomington Student Activity, or Advisory Council met today. We had a brief introduction and discussed what our purpose is, and brainstormed some of our main topics that we'll try to tackle. We decided to meet more frequently than previously talked about, and we, our next meeting is in November.
Thank you. That brings us to our public recognition. Is there anyone who wishes to address the School Board on an item that is not on the Seeing no one come forward, I will move on to the government classes. At the School Board meetings, requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, and the like. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I see there's some students in the back, and I'd like to invite you to come up here and just state your name and who your teacher is, and then you can return to your seat. And at the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on your agenda from anyone sitting along the wall.[1606.12][1606.12](Laughter). I guess it's you.[1608.12][1608.12](Laughter).
I'm Anna Olson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
Thank you.
I'm Haley Martinez, and my teacher is Ms. Abby.
I'm Megan Kendall, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
My name is Hunter Berg, and my teacher is also Starlene.
My name is Jeremiah Weeks, and my teacher is also Mr. Starlene.
Thank you. Thank you for your attendance tonight. That will bring us to the Part A. Would someone like to move Part A of the agenda?
Someone.
Second. Thank you. Part A includes our board business, minutes, personnel items, field trips, and our finances. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Brings us to Part B. Approval of the Family and Consumer Sciences Curriculum for Grades 6 through 12. Does someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Result that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the adoption of the Family and Consumer Sciences FACS curriculum for grades 6, 12, effective within, with the 2016-2017 school year.
Second.
I believe we have some folks that are here to talk to us about this.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, community members who are here with us, and viewers. We are here to talk about the recent curriculum review for the Family and Consumer Sciences and also for the dance curriculum. So, the teachers that are with me tonight, who will be presenting for us about the FACS curriculum, Family and Consumer Sciences, are Michelle Blodgett, Bonnie Kane, Kristen Donnelly, and Carrie McElvin. And then, of course, I'm also here sharing with you as well, Dr. Jenna Mitchler. So, when we work to standard, when we work, excuse me, to review our standards and our curriculum, we are doing the work we do because we would like to create a guaranteed and viable curriculum. When we prioritize standards, we take a look at all of the standards, and we put them into three different categories, three different levels, so essential, important, and enhancing. After we do this work, we look at the different grade levels of the class, and we look for vertical alignment through all of the grade levels, making sure that what's taught in 6th grade leads into what's taught in 7th grade, and so on. So, just as a little bit of a review, and for those who are watching who might not be familiar, the essential standards are standards that have to have endurance, so they're things that the students will keep with them long after they finish the course. that the students will keep with them long after they finish the course. They're standards that have leverage, so students will remain, I'm sorry, retain the information and use it in other disciplines, and it also prepares students for the next level of learning. The second category of standard is the essential standards, and these are vital, but they are not standards that rise quite to the level of importance of essential. All teachers teach all of the standards, so of course, these are standards that are tied to assessments and taught in all of the classes. And the last category of standards are enhancing standards. These are standards that may not be central to the course, but of course, as they are standards, they're taught in all of the courses. When we talk about Family and Consumer Sciences, we talk about standards, but the real word we should use is frameworks. We're using the word interchangeably because they mean the same, but for FACS, we're using frameworks that come from national frameworks, and we use the STEM and STEAM standards to impact, to think through our work, the 21st century skills, FCCLA connections, FACS national standards, career and technical education standards, and we also consider industry needs. So I mentioned the steering committee members. There are a few who aren't here with us tonight, so I'll mention them. Kristy Hoyt was also a member of our group, and then Debbie Belfry, who's our Career and Development Coordinator, worked with us on this curriculum review.
We're very excited to be here tonight to share with you our mission statement and to share with you our standards for our classes. The mission of Family and Consumer Science, and just to back up a little bit, we worked with, between the middle school and the high school, to update our mission statement. So we really worked collaboratively together. It was a, it was a great process for us to work on that together. But really, the true mission of Family and Consumer Science education is to prepare students for aspects of their personal and professional lives. FACS provides opportunities for students to develop the foundational knowledge and skills that's necessary for...
Successful life management and career development by applying employability skills such as problem-solving, critical thinking, integrity, cultural competence, and collaboration.
Social awareness and interpersonal communication to establish and maintain positive relationships within a family, community, and workplace.
Financial well-being through management of personal and family resources, aligning nutrition and family wellness with individual and family needs by selecting and preparing nutritious foods.
And last but not least, functioning effectively as providers and consumers of goods and
So our emphasis is on college and career readiness, our focus, our standards, on the processes of decision-making, goal-setting, problem-solving, to achieve professional, personal, academic, and career success, and goes along with the PGP plans, the growth, which in the center, the employability, ethics, teamwork, critical thinking, problem-solving, foundational skills.
If you, sorry, if you would like to access the prioritized standards, the links are attached, and you can see what all of our specific standards are for each course.
And the same is true with the high school courses, along with the links. I understand that you also have written copies of the standards, and so we'd like to, I guess, if you have any questions. I understand there was one question that came up regarding multicultural foods, and I don't know if now would be a good time to answer that.
That would be a perfect time to answer.
Okay. And that's a class that covers, I believe the question had to do with specifically what types of foods and cultures do we cover, and my best quick answer is that we touch on briefly on each of the continents, so we represent the whole world as best we can in a trimester.
So you teach them how to make Swedish pancakes?
That's in there.
I was looking through the, some of the standards, and it was interesting because at first, I think it was the 6th grade, like financial literacy was at the bottom, and I'm like, well, that's kind of important, and then I was looking through, and then I was like, oh, in 8th grade, that's like the essential, because it probably makes sense, because that's, at that point, they can start looking maybe for summer jobs, or babysitting, or even things like that, and then as they get into high school. And so I, I guess my comment is that I appreciated how it makes sense how, as you're prioritizing things, like as they're going through different phases of their life, it actually makes sense to have one thing prioritized over the other. So I just, I guess, I don't know, I concur with what you came up with. That's, that's all I had for that.
I'd love to comment on that. With the 6th grade, you know, it's leading into that, so goal-setting and values are at the very base of that. And then, in the 8th grade, you actually put that into practice with talking about, you know, credit, debit, those kinds of things, yeah.
You know, I went to a function over, I want to say, was that Olson? And they had a class, and I don't know if it was the same class, or if it was a math class, or what it was, but they had, it's like they had to take fake money and invested it in the stock market, and I just thought that was such a great key. And then the kids that won, I wanted to get their numbers, because I said, I should have been listening to you. But is that part of this curriculum, or my?
That was an after-school, or over and above, it's a stock market game.
Oh, okay, fine.
Great. I would say in our independent living class, however, we do simulations and where students can practice dealing with budgeting, and buying a car, and renting an apartment, and all those things that people need to do in real life. And so they do go through kind of a mock, mock practicing of that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? Knowing that students learn at different rates and different capacities, do you think there's enough, so what I'm looking for, maybe latitude, to both challenge and at the same time not overwhelm the students that are learning, let's just say, we're going to learn how to make food on each continent? You want to keep them interested, but maybe you can help me understand.
So I remember one time talking to a group of parents, and the first thing I said is FACS classes are not for everybody, you know? I said, if you imagine that your child will never have a relationship, never prepare a meal, never balance a budget, never have a child, you know, then by all means, you know? So I think what we deal with is real, and so people take it in on the level that maybe they're ready for, and so, I don't know if that answers what you're saying. It's relevant to everyone on all levels.
I know it's resonated with both our sons. Our youngest comes home with new recipes and wants to try them out on us, so we trust that you're not sending him home with something that won't taste good.
On the other end, I was the kid that had to come to school every day for two weeks to finish my backpack that I was trying to sew. So I understand that not everybody learns at the same, the same rate, so please take it easy on my kids when they...
So are these FACS classes, are they required at any level, or is it voluntary? Is it elective all throughout school?
Selective at the high school level, and at the middle school, it's different, yeah.
Required for all three years? It's required, or does it have to, okay?
All three years. So there's a, there's a foods component at all three, all three years. So the 6th grade focuses on my plate and snacks. The 7th grade focuses on label reading and breakfast, and measuring such, and the 8th grade focuses on meal preparation, the components of a meal, and then the basic essential nutrients. And so they build on each other as far as, you know, hopefully that students are comfortable in the kitchen, and they understand that you can not spend a ton of money, and not a ton of time, and have amazing food.
Well, yeah, it's a, it's a great class, the FACS class. I'm glad that we continue to offer them, because it's one of those things that some school districts might be doing, doing away with, and it's great that we still have these opportunities, because I mean, I enjoyed it when I was in school, and I'm glad that our kids can still enjoy these classes.
Agreed.
I just, I just wanted to quickly thank all of you, because I have definitely benefited from my daughters and your classes. I have two of the greatest chefs ever at home. I also know which apartments in Bloomington are way overpriced, because the one in independent living let me know how expensive they were when we were driving by. And also, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Donnelly, especially because her child development class is probably one of the reasons I have an education major now at my house, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So next steps for our group, we'll be meeting actually on Wednesday already to start taking a look at our Common Summit of Assessments, and how those align to these newly prioritized standards and our new mission statement for the rest of this school year. And just sort of, so everyone knows, these standards, as they have always been in the past, have also gone to several other committees for feedback before coming to you as a group. So they've also gone to the Pathways Advisory Committee, the District Diversity and Equity Advisory Committee, and secondary-level principals, who've all had an opportunity to see the mission statements and provide some feedback.
Are there any other questions? I guess we're ready to move on to dance.
Thank you. So the next group that we worked with last year was also, was Dance, and so the Dance Steering Committee was quite small. We have one Dance teacher in the district, so I worked with Ashley Growth, who is the high school Dance teacher at Kennedy High School right now. And I'll let Ashley tell you a little bit about the mission statement.
Okay. Well, our mission statement hasn't changed, and it's basically the same, and the purpose of the Dance class is for students to learn respect of many different cultures of dance worldwide and through their own community, and it provides learners an opportunity to enhance their awareness through movements of their body, and they get to explore their movements, and improvise, and problem-solve, as well as learn techniques over several genres, not just hip-hop, not just ballet. And students will create and perform choreographic works that express their individual voices and preferences. So that was our mission statement. It's a whole bunch, but it hasn't changed. And outlined there, you have our two courses that are offered at Kennedy currently, Beginning Dance and Intermediate Dance. And basically, we receive new standards, so had to prioritize them and start working through them, so that is what you have before you. And then after, I will work creating summative assessments that go along with the standards. There you go.
So do you have any questions about the Dance curriculum?
Quick question, yeah. Well, first of all, I forgot my manners. Thank you all for coming. Dance class, how many students are involved in it?
Um, let's see, about, between, around 25 is an average for class size.
Okay, and that's, that's manageable? You're the one that teaches them?
It is manageable. It gets complex when we break off into different groups, and they're creating their own things. That is a large, but it's okay, it's manageable, it's fun.
Okay.
It's very diverse, so.
Good, good. Thank you.
Yep.
So we just have this currently at Kennedy, there's no classes at Jefferson?
Currently, not, no. I believe staffing is part of the reason for that.
Okay. Was there previously Dance at Jefferson, and just went away because there was a lack of interest?
Right. I've heard yes. I have only been a teacher here with Bloomington Public Schools for, this is my third year. So I heard several years ago, yes.
Yep, so I can speak a little bit to the process. When a new course is proposed, typically what happens is a teacher from the building will pair with an administrator. There's a form teachers can fill out, bring to their administrator, and then at, around December, early December, we as a curriculum group with the secondary-level principals take a look at all of those applications, and then approve or deny new courses. So if Jefferson were to want to start a Dance class, the, a teacher there could go through the approval process.
How long has there been a Dance class at Kennedy, I guess, from my next question?
At least three.
They have been through several, yeah. They have been through several teachers. I have talked to several past teachers. I don't know how long.
I think it's been at least six.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about Dance?
Have a question, and it's about both classes, but thank you very much. This is really helpful and it's great information, and the job that you're doing is just amazing, too. And I know my daughter, my oldest daughter is at Kennedy, and she's taking a Dance class, and I know that I'm supposed to help a little bit with the choreography that they have to come up with, because she's requesting help with the Latin American rhythm, so trying to figure out how to help her. But my question is in relation to the student population that chooses to take the FACS classes and also the Dance class. Do you see a balance between our students of color and students of, white students that might be registering for those classes? Do you see a preference in specific groups, or is it pretty much balanced?
For me, I think it's balanced. It's hard to know what, you know, the actual population looks like at Kennedy, but our classes are full of diversity. We have kids that are taking AP classes, we have kids that are in specialized classes, we have kids from, you know, all over. I have my one class, I have, I have two students that are exchange students, and they're from other countries, and they're here studying for the year, and so we just have a huge variety of people. And kind of speaking to your question before, I mean, differentiation is just really a huge, it's a big part of Family and Consumer Science. We really believe that students need to be challenged, and at the same time, students are, you know, able to grasp the material. And so it seems that it's very well-balanced. We have a variety of kids taking our classes. Seems to reflect the school.
And to piggyback on that, I always say, if you want to see a snapshot of Kennedy, walk into a FACS class.
Yeah. It's fun.
Thank you. I would have to say, in the Dance classroom, it's also equally diverse. I get more of the students who have always wanted to learn how to dance and have never danced at a studio outside of school because they can't afford it, so generally, the beginner populations of dancing, but equally diverse.
Question over here.
As far as gender, they predominantly female, male, from what's half and half?
That's a good question. Depends on the class. Our Foods classes are half and half, maybe even more male.
More male.
Our Early Childhood Development, predominantly more female. And so it just depends on the class.
And then with Dance, it depends on the trimester, but generally about a third male, two-thirds female, so generally.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We need to backtrack a little bit. We need to vote on the Family and Consumer Science resolution?
Somebody's got to read it in, though.
Pardon me?
We got to read it.
Family and Consumer Science, the Dance we need to...
Oh, okay, got you.
So, let's vote on the Family and Consumer Sciences curriculum. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Now, if someone would like to read the Dance curriculum resolution, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, we resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the Dance curriculum for grades 9 through 12, effective with the 2016-17 school year.
Second. Thank you. Since we've already had our discussion, all in favor of this Dance curriculum, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you for your information. And next, I will invite John Wiser to come and give us an information, some information about our enrollment report.
Thank you, Chair Bartolata, school board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, and new student representatives. The purpose of this enrollment report, this is an annual report that we put out every year. Purpose of tonight's event is to familiarize you with your report. There's a lot of details, a lot of numbers in this report. I really just walk you through and highlight an item or two on each page. It's about 20 pages long, so I'll take about 15 minutes to do that, answer a few questions, and then we'll move on. I think the value of this report is, this is the place that kind of sets the standard for what we often say in describing our district to others. This is the report by which we say we have, we are a district of 10,149 students. We are 40% free and reduced lunch... We are 40% free and reduced lunch district, and we are a 49% ethnically diverse district. So, those numbers come from this report. This is a snapshot in time, and so those numbers actually change day over day as students come and go, but this is often the report that's quoted. We use this, these numbers often in setting program goals. Schools use these numbers in comparing themselves to others. So, the piece of advice I would give you is, if you're, if you're looking at finding meaning in looking at all of these numbers, it's sometimes helpful to put this report next to last year's version and do a side-by-side comparison so you can see when something catches your eye, if that number's been going up or down, whether the population at a school is changing, and so on. And then you'll hear me say, use the same numbers throughout, and that would be your homework. Your homework is to know our district in terms of data, in terms of diversity, in terms of student population. So, I'll start with page three. Again, this is a snapshot. It helps us get a sense of who we are as a district. We publish these reports going back, I think, the last seven or eight years to our website. So, you can go on to any page of Bloomington Public Schools or any school site, search for enrollment report and find a link here, also through the REA office, link Dr. Heistad's office. This data does move on a daily basis, and so if you have access to some of our other data, like data via the hub as a school board member, or if teachers do as teachers or administrators, they sometimes will see numbers that vary a little bit. That's because we update those online numbers on a nightly basis. If you ever hear Dr. Heistad report to you, he might give you slightly different numbers just because he's talking about numbers that were from that research the previous week. All right. So, let's start on page four. Page four compares our current numbers to projections and to last year. So, in that top graph here, I might do a little follow-the-bouncing mouse, see if this helps. I'll help you just walk through the columns on, on one of these, and then you can sort of follow the pattern with the others. In this top section, we're talking about last year's, a year ago, a year ago this time, I presented the October report for 2015. These were the numbers, these were the numbers that I reported. We, we said we were a district of 10,022 students. Here are, here is that same snapshot for this year. We are a district of 10,149 students. You'll hear me say that about 12 times in the next 15 minutes. We do projections. Rod Ziffkovich does projections in the spring of each year as he prepares budget numbers for you all and for staffing buildings. Those projections are done at the, each spring, and at that time, Rod was predicting, based on demographic data, seventh graders who turn into eighth graders, incoming kindergarten class, all of those dynamic things that are considered in doing a projection. Rod was projecting us to be a 10,062-student district. The fourth column in this, or the fifth column in this, is top table, gives you the differences between the projections and the actual enrollment. And then that last column gives you the difference between this year and last year. So, good news, we're up 127 students over last year. We're, we're starting to grow a little bit, even if it's a 1% growth. If you wanted to break those numbers down a little bit, school by school, you'll see in this middle block, the same data displayed horizontally, where the top line now is all of our elementary schools, last year's data, this year's parallel data, the projection, and then the comparison to those projections. Same is true in that bottom table where it's last year's data, this year's data, projections, and the difference from projections. One thing I'll point out in here is that you'll see SUN listed in the elementary schools. SUN is our program, Students with Unique Needs. It's a special ed program based out of Olson Middle School. It's, is a small number of kids, it's 23 students, but it is K-8. The bulk of those students are at the elementary, so just for cleanliness purposes, really, we, we group them as an element, with the elementary data. If you were interested in more specific breakdown, for instance, by class or by grade at a site, this page, page five, tells you a little bit about how big each class is at each site. A couple of things that you might note here is that our incoming kindergarten class is 718 students. That's almost dead even with our incoming class of kindergarteners last year, and our current senior class is 810 students. There again is that 10,149, that should be consistent throughout. Now, let's talk about demographics. So, pages six and seven and eight, break down some demographics. I'll just walk you through this one in a little more detail, and then you'll see lots of parallel to the next couple of slides. Here again, in this first column is the 10,149 students, if you follow my mouse. We do a gender breakdown here of male and female students. This set of data is about the ethnic categories, the federally-defined ethnicity categories, and the, the numbers of students of that 10,149. This is the place where we would say one of the grand takeaways from this report that we're a 49% ethnically diverse district. You can see across here, it's been broken out into elementary, middle, and high school, so you can see the variation of what that looks like in our elementary population, our middle school population, our high school population. Elementary students become middle school students who become high school students, so we would expect that, since there's a higher percentage of elementary students or a more diverse population of elementary students, we would accept, we would expect that that, that number would increase overall, over time. So, we will be a 50% ethnically diverse district within a year or two. The next set here is EL, or English Learners. We're a 12% EL district. Just for comparison's sake, that's down a percentage over last year. There's a disproportionality here in, toward the elementary. Anticipating in a question that sometimes I get asked, students can graduate out of our EL services, and so they primarily come to us in elementary school, they graduate out of those services. That's why the numbers get smaller as you go up in age. The next grouping of data is around free and reduced lunch qualification. So, here we are, a 40% free and reduced lunch district overall. Again, it skews a little bit more toward the elementary. We were the same last year. With rounding, we were a 40% free and reduced lunch eligible district last year. Second to the last set of data here is around special ed. We're 12% special ed school district. That's down slightly over last year. This number, if you were having the two reports side-by-side, would be 13% last year, slightly less special ed students with IEPs. And lastly, how many students are drawn to Bloomington? That number is at 7%. It's equivalent across the three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and it's also the same as it was last year. So, those categories, if you want a little more detail, if you're a numbers person, you can look school by school on page seven. So, you can pick your favorite elementary school, look at the total elementary population in this first column, gender breakdown, ethnic diversity breakdown, EL breakdown, and so on. You might notice a few things. This is a good place to look at comparisons from our east to our west schools, or perhaps to zone in on schools to which you frequent or that you represent personally. So, in the ethnic diversity category here, for instance, you'll see a difference between Ridgeview, which is 27%, ethnically diverse, and Valley View Elementary, which is 91% ethnically diverse. The same is true, or the same categories are used on slide eight, only for our five secondary schools. Again, if you put these two reports side-by-side, you can see some of the variation in numbers as they fluctuate. There's nothing here that's moved more than a percentage, so this, the, the EL student population, for instance, or the free and reduced student population across secondaries only moves within 1%. At sites, you can see a 2% or a 3% movement, but we haven't had major program changes or, or border changes that can sometimes move numbers more. So, this report compared to last year's is pretty stable. What might be helpful is page nine, which tries to put in a graphical form some of the, some of what I've just talked through. So, the intent here with page nine is to look at three categories that can be, that can give a school a certain dynamic. That is, they can, they can reflect what you, what experience you have when you walk into a school. So, I've pulled the EL data in green, I've pulled the ethnic diversity data in red, and the free and reduced eligibility data in blue. Those are grouped here on the left, the two, the two high schools, the three middle schools next, and then the 10 elementaries. And then they're sorted in an order by free and reduced lunch eligibility. So, you can see how some of this data correlates with each other, that students are not just one of those things, they're frequently two of those things, or three of those, of those You might hear Dr. Heistad talk about challenge index. Challenge index is his statistical way of, of trying to represent a school's challenge, correlated challenge based on demographics. It's more complicated than I would go into here, but, but it kind of corresponds to Valley View having the highest challenge index. It's especially helpful when we try to look outside of our district and we try to compare our, we try to find a school that's like Indian Mounds in another district. Is there an elementary school who's knocking the socks off something in Burnsville, or in Richfield, or in Minneapolis? Challenge index is Dr. Heistad's way of, of trying to find a similar school in terms of demographic description so that, so that they can do a comparison. Page 10 is just about our ethnic diversity profile. Again, last year, we were 48% ethnically diverse district. This year, we're 49% ethnically diverse district, and there you can kind of see the, the breakdown of the federally-defined categories. Second half of this report is, is an attempt to look at some 10-year trends. So, there's three, three areas that sometimes are of interest here. The first is enrollment. You've seen various forms of this enrollment graph on page 12. It shows that really, when we start to take out some of those early years, we've been, had slight up and down over the past 10 years with that high point that was fairly unique, at 10,313 in, in 1112. We've had a slight gain of 10 students last year, we've had a gain of 127 students this year. You might keep this graph in mind when you see Rod come with projections. Rod works more closely with demographers. You, you might be familiar with his, the concept of a, a conservative estimate and less conservative estimate, and, and so that's where we, you kind of see these numbers in correlation to what the demographer might, might give you. Here's our trend in ethnic diversity over that same 10-year period. Basically, we're on a one-to-two-year percentage increase over time. That has not changed. We've been, that's been a pretty steady growth area for us. More detail around diversity, again, if you look for a particular school and track that school throughout that 10-year span, that's sometimes helpful. Or if you look at how schools are clustered in this, in this graph of 10, 10 elementary schools, the one little blip here is the SUN program. The SUN program was created in 1415, and then it's only been, the last three years we've had data on it. So, it's such a small number of students, it's 23 students, and so you're, you can expect some volatility with that data. Sometimes I get asked about why, why does the, why do these lines turn up so severely in this particular year? Sometimes that can be described because of boundary changes. Remember, we had a boundary change some five or six years ago. We've also grown our DA program at a couple of our elementaries that tends to draw a different type of student. We've moved programs based on the size of a school, so special ed might move a program into a school or out of a school based on facilities, or teaching staff, or just the need. The need as a wave of students comes through, and so if you move a chunk of 30 students from one building over to a neighboring elementary that has a little more space, it's going to move these numbers a little bit. This, slide 15 is the same ethnic diversity comparison for our three middle schools. All three of our levels, elementary, middle, and high school, are reflecting a little bit of that 1% growth in diversity. You can see it reflected here. I think this slide last year showed middle schools, as a threesome, were about 47% ethnically diverse, so it's gone up about 2% just comparing, just as that wave of diversity comes through. The third slide around ethnic diversity is comparing the Jefferson to Kennedy population. You can see here the growth over time. You might note that the growth is a little accelerated at Kennedy, growing 22% over that 10-year period, but at Jefferson, still growing 12% over that period. So, Jefferson is a 29% ethnically diverse school. The last four slides do the same sort of 10-year timeline for free and reduced lunch eligibility, something we watch because free and reduced lunch, the poverty measure often tracks with academic performance or a challenge of a school. It also aligns with services, title, school classification, or other services that are at schools, so we watch free and reduced lunch eligibility pretty closely. Here's the growth over the last 10 years. If you were to shrink this graph to the last five years, you can see that we've been pretty stable, going from 39% free and reduced lunch eligible five years ago to 40% now. Not much change over that period. Here's the change across each of our elementary schools. Slide 19 is the change across our three middle schools. And the last, second to the last slide is the change across Kennedy and Jefferson over that same timeframe. This report is published to our website. I probably refer people to it maybe 20 times throughout the year because I, I will get questions about, tell me again about your district from, from the public, from other people. It's a good, it's good to have at your fingertips, I'll give you that advice in terms of wanting to know, or when somebody asks you a question, to clear up any misconceptions about how one school is compared to another school, or what the public perception is of a school that's down the street by somebody who may not have students in that school. Our schools do change over time, and so if you haven't been in one of our schools for 10 years, you can walk in and have a different experience. You can see a different population. People have questions about that, and so it's, it's good to have that handy. So, the quiz would be, what are the three takeaways? The three takeaways are, we are a district with population of 10,149 students, growing by 127 over last year. We are a 40% free and reduced lunch eligible district, and we're a 49% ethnically diverse district. What questions do you have for me?
I'm here. First, thanks for coming, John. Appreciate the information. The question that I got asked quite a bit lately, the answer I think lives on page four. It's the enrollment information summary. The question I'm getting asked is, we've got, it seems like we have a lot more students. There's a lot of students, a lot of students. And the interest for me, when I saw the initial enrollment report, was where do those students live? What seats do they occupy? And when I read this report, it looks like, well, we have 127 new students, and 79 of those students are sitting in high school seats. Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, I would say that, so I would say 80, if you look at the same column, this column up here, we have 127 new students over last year, 80 new students at our two high schools, and 107 new students at our two middle, or three middle schools, and actually a drop in enrollment at our elementaries of 60 students.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the, the question was, you know, we're fine people hoping that, that, that boost in enrollment might be a little lower down, maybe middle or elementary, but it, it does look like the majority of it, or 80 out of 127 are in high school.
Correct.
Okay. Just, just wanted to make sure for the folks that are interested in that particular number, that's, that's where you can find it on slide number four.
Now, did you say that the enrollment for kindergarten, kindergarten did not go down? Is that right?
I think, if I remember, it's 719 last year, and it's 718 this year, so it's stable.
Do we, do we know what percent of the Do we know what percent of the students, the new students that we received this year are -- were students that were coming from Richfield?
From Richfield?
Yeah.
I've looked at that. I don't have it off the top of my head, but the largest number, the two districts who contribute the most outside enrollment are Richfield and Minneapolis. And so it's more than 10, but I could get that to you. I'm working right now on a breakdown for our elementary principals on the K extract as they prepare, believe it or not, for the 1718 enrollment year. And so part of that process is to look at the data from this year and just figure out how many surprises there were in the system. Where did these students come from that are in the current system? I don't have it handy, but I think about 7 percent seems to be the guidance for the number of outside students. I suspect that's the same in our kindergarten class as well. About 7 percent of those students are coming from outside of Bloomington.
It will be good to see what difference there is between this year with previous years, especially with Minneapolis and Richfield, but I would be more interested in looking at the Richfield numbers, too.
What I could do is, when I do, I could give a simplified form of that K extract analysis to the board. That would answer at least part of that question, I think.
And I think I have made this request before, but, you know, if it's possible to even have it in groups, you know, if it's elementary school kids, if it's middle school, if it is high school, just to kind of have a better idea of what happened this year.
So I'll give you a little -- another layer of detail that kind of complicates that question is, a lot of our students are two-family students, and mom may live in Richfield and dad lives in Bloomington. It's hard for us to know if this is a Richfield kid or a Bloomington kid. I basically need to make some decision about whether they're a Richfield kid or a Bloomington kid when they have two primary addresses. And so we would sometimes say fairly arbitrarily, well, we'll take the first mailing address, for example.
Okay.
Another piece of difficulty is that students move frequently, and so on any given -- at any given time, they may be in one location, and then they move, and they go -- they un-enroll from us, and then they re-enroll two months later. So it's hard to know what you're getting is really that snapshot in time. Mobility is a challenge for all school districts. It's a challenge for us, too. Some of those kids, especially on that Richfield-Bloomington border, are some of our most mobile kids. And then I'd say the third challenge is that looking back at data is always difficult because we did probably the closest look I've ever done at K extract this year, but it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison to last year and the year before and the year before. Because if you didn't prepare it two years ago, it's hard to recreate that preparation. So that's why I said, you might not get the full answer to your question in a summary report, but you'd at least get some inkling. We've committed to do more thorough analysis of our K extract because we want our elementary staffs and principals to know their schools and know their communities as best we can. And so it feels like our job is to provide them as much data as we can on their community.
Thank you.
No questions from the students.
They'll come. They'll get used to it.
Thank you.
That brings us to our board member reports, and I would like to begin by just saying that it's been one year since we reviewed our policy on televising study sessions. And in this past year, the vice chair and I have worked diligently to integrate things that used to be in study sessions into board meetings. And I don't believe we've had more than one study session, if that, this past year. So -- but we do need to revote on televising the study sessions, which is almost a moot point, but -- so we will be doing that at our next board meeting. And so if there's any discussion that you want to have, we could have it now and vote at our next meeting.
Wouldn't we just have discussion when the motion is made, and then we?
Well, we could do that, but I'm just...
Think about it.
So we will move on to other board members' reports.
Just to clarify, because you brought that up now because we had tabled it until...
For one year.
For one year, right.
We had the -- the motion was for only a year. The motion could be changed to make it permanent. We don't have to do this every year.
Sure.
Depends on how the motion's made. Correct?
Yeah, so I think last year, yeah, I think last year we made a motion for one year, so we're...
Yeah.
The one-year review time is coming, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware and could think about it. So we'll talk about it at our next meeting.
Sure, thanks.
Sounds good.
I don't mind going first.
We know.
So I thought I'd change this up just a little bit, the format, and I'd focus on maybe one day. One -- it's -- you'll see when I read this. I was on campus at Oak Grove Elementary, and I think it was early last week. And I was in the media center, and I was chatting with the people at the desk, just checking to see how the book sale was going. And there was a kindergarten class on the floor, kind of in the back of the media center, and they were reading and working on their lesson plan. And the teacher noticed and recognized me and asked me to come over and sit in. And so I went over and sat crisscross applesauce on the floor with a bunch of kindergarteners. And the lesson that the teacher was teaching was, let me see, I'm going to make sure I'm getting this right. Bear with me here, I'm reading my writing. Oh, okay, they were talking about illustrations. And they read a book, and I may get this wrong. It was about an elephant and a bunny. I know it was an elephant, there may not have been a bunny in there. Anyways, it was two animals. And the students were trying to grasp the concept of illustration. What is an illustration? And so the teacher was reading, and she had a great big book, and the illustrations were very expressive. So when the elephant was tired, the trunk was low, and he was rubbing his eyes, when he was happy, when he was exasperated. And then they would illustrate each and every word. And the kids had an opportunity to raise their hand and say, oh, he looks happy, he looks sad, he looks frustrated. And they would just shout it out when they saw the picture. And the teacher would take the time to listen and equate what the students were saying back to what the picture was illustrating. And most of the time, these students got the illustration correct. And it was just fascinating to sit there, just kind of mingled in between all these little kiddos who looked at me for a little bit. I told them I was in third grade, and they said, okay, you can sit here for a little bit. But the -- just to watch them learn and watch these teachers guide the students through this lesson plan was just really amazing. And it was a blast to be able to sit in there and listen. And I was there for maybe 20 minutes. And then all of a sudden, over the loudspeaker, I hear lockdown, lockdown. And whatever the protocol was for that, the students, the teacher stood up, the students stood up, and I stood up. And I walked to the room with a bunch of kindergartners, and I did what the protocol called for. I don't know how much I can share over the microphone now, but I followed that protocol, and the students said, this is what you do, this is how you do it, and you stay there until we tell you to move. So I stayed there until they said I could move. And it was just, it was really nice to see all these kids took it in stride. It interrupted their story about the elephant and the bunny, but it was very nice to see that everybody understood in early October or mid-October how this drill worked, what it meant, and everything went well. So it was just really fascinating to sit and listen and learn and to have that opportunity. So that, for me, that was gold. So I just wanted to focus on that one item. I could have brought a bunch of different items to the board table tonight, but I learned a lot from that. And I want to say thank you to the kindergarten teachers for recognizing that a board member was in the school and not being afraid to ask me to come and sit in their class and share in what they do. So, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I'll go. Our student representatives' reports were so much better than any that I've done that I will just leave the board student advisory council report to what they said previously. So thank you for that. I attended Shadow Student Day at Olson, not as a board member, but as a dad, but I wanted to share it with the board. And anyone who's listening who's considering doing it at their middle school, it was an excellent experience, I thought, for us. What it was is, they gave an opportunity for parents to come, follow their kids around. I think, I don't know how long the classes normally are, but we went to all of their core classes in a period of about three hours. And so, yeah, it was from 8:30 or 8:40 until 11 something. And so we got to go to the math class and the reading class and all the, you know, the science class and see what the students would do on any given day. In the language arts class, we got to see a clip of Star Wars, so that was a lot of fun. But yeah, it was a great opportunity for, I think, the parents to get a chance to meet the teachers, interact with the teachers, get to understand the kid, what the kids are doing. We got to see how they use the Chromebook, how they log into Moodle and do the online classes. And so a lot of the things that are different between that and the elementary school, see how many books they have to carry between classes. And so hopefully, as we get more and more technology, that stack of books and folders that they have to carry will continue to decrease. But just seeing the daily life of the kids and also being an Olson Middle School alumni, it was kind of fun to sit in the chair again and like, oh, yeah, I remember this, I remember going through this hallway. And so, yeah, that, in the past couple of weeks, that was, I think, the highlight of what I did in the schools, and really appreciated that opportunity that they gave to the parents to come visit and see what the kids are doing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I attended our board legislative committee, and since Director Corman is the chair of that, I will let her speak to what went on there. And I also attended, I guess it's now our insurance committee. It used to be called the Labor Management, but it's going to be the Insurance Group now. And for those that don't know, the district is self-funded insurance, so that group listens, like, kind of an overview of claims that are coming in, monitors possibility of claims that are really high, also looks at different areas that the claims might be in and where the fund balance is for the insurance. And I have asked, actually talked to Chair Bartolata and Superintendent Fujitaki about having more of an update here at the board meetings on that insurance report. I think that that's information since, as directors, we are actually the people that are in charge of that insurance. So I wanted to make sure that everybody here at the table is updated on the insurance, and it's only going to be quarterly now, so it would not be something we'd have to do every month. But I wanted to make sure that that information is brought for everybody to see. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Corman, did you want to speak to the legislative committee?
I can talk a little bit about it, but we're going to be bringing more information to the board about this committee. But the Legislative Committee met October 12. That was the last time we met. And we had an opportunity to discuss a little bit about what we want to do with a proposal that we would like to bring to the board regarding forming a, what did we call it, an advisory...
Legislative action.
Legislative action committee. And so we'll be bringing you more information about that in the next few weeks. But meanwhile, we're going to be, or one of us is going to be attending one of the meetings that are, you know, from other school districts that have had this same kind of committee. And what, who is the person who's going to be attending? Isn't that you?
I think we have to talk about that, don't we? The three of us afterwards? Yes, I'll go, but I don't know if you guys are going.
Yeah, well, but we're looking at, you know, bringing a proposal. We'll bring you more information about what this is about and, you know, what membership's going to be about. And so there's more details, because we still need to meet one more time and bring you some more information about that and bring you some more information about the legislative platform for the school board, too.
I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
I just wanted to say we're also, Superintendent Fujitaki and other groups have been talking also about our legislative agenda so that we can speak with one voice this year. And so other leaders of other groups have been working and the superintendent, and bringing that to us so that a variety of groups representing schools will have one voice at the Capitol and hopefully ask for one or two, whatever their items will be, so they'll be on the same agenda, I guess you could say.
And looking into the legislative forum that we have every year, as I mentioned before, we're looking at an earlier date this time. So we're not going to wait until next year to bring, you know, to invite our legislators right before the session starts. We're going to do it sometime during the month of December. So I think we're looking more into mid-December, so if you want to kind of have that date in mind, we'll bring you, we will confirm that date later on as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, just real quick. Yeah, it dawned on me that when I reported that there was a lockdown, that was a, it turned out to be a practice drill. So just want to make sure everyone doesn't run around asking about that. That was a practice.
Superintendent?
First, I'd like to motion to cancel the school board meeting scheduled for December 26 due to winter break.
Come on.
Second.
All in favor of canceling the December 26 school board meeting, please signify by saying aye.
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 I still can't...
With that decision, December 12 will be the only school board meeting in December, and the world's best workforce annual public meeting will be held on December 12 at 6:00 p.m. here at the Educational Services Center. The new teacher contract also calls for the establishment of an advisory team. The first meeting of that team will be on November 9. And the purpose is to give a louder and stronger voice to teachers, to administration.
Thank you. Did you have something?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to establish a study session for board professional development on November 14 at 6:00 p.m.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of a board study session for board development on November 14 at 6:00 p.m., please signify by saying aye.
What day is that?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday?
Aye.
Aye.
Right before the next board meeting. Any opposed? None. All right. Good. Is there any other business to come before the board this evening? If not, we're adjourned.
All right.
Congratulations.
We made it.
All right.